Good afternoon. I'd like to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do the people's work. And at this time, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Thornton Frye from Biltmore Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Frye?
My church is on Elliot Avenue. If you drive down that way, you'll see a nice tall church with a tall tower, brick, and pressed stone out of Richmond, and it's beautiful. It's like an old English battle tower. And I chose as a little verse for our church, "The name of the Lord is a strong tower; the righteous runneth into it and are safe." Lord, we thank you for the great freedoms our land affords to us, the opportunities, life that we still enjoy, need to continue perhaps, yes. And, Lord, we are grateful for the wonderful freedoms that have graced our lives. Thank you for the heritage that we have, matters historical. We thank you for the great religious background that has crowned our nation with God's honor and success. Thank you for our city, our state, all who lead us. Lord, enable them not to become wearied in well-doing, but to be strong and to go forward and to do their duties well. Give us the grace and perception to appreciate all that they do in the opposition that is often offered only without the praise that's due. We're grateful for this night and bless the activities of this council. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Pastor Frye, I'd like to thank you once again for coming. And for all of you that don't know, we just celebrated this year Pastor Frye's 60th anniversary at his beloved Biltmore Baptist Church. And I must say, that's right.
In my older years, I confused things just a little.
Yes, sir.
I thought they were celebrating my 60th birthday.
Okay. Well, I know I speak on behalf of the council as well as Mr. Moody. It was a pleasure and an honor for us to make that presentation. Mr. Moody and I did the duties, and I think you share it with us, that young lad Moody was running around the church as a little one, but you wouldn't share with the mayor anything else for political purposes, the only reason why I wanted to know. But thank you again, sir, for coming. With that, members of council, will you please indicate your presence electronically?
Seven members of the City Council are present.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Members of the City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of August 14, 2012, a regular meeting of August 14, 2012. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Leave adoption?
Second.
Okay.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Very good.
The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Okay, very good. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 12-343, Presentation. Presentation of Special Appellations to Newly Appointed Board and Commissioned Members. If the following would join Vice Mayor Whitehurst at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk, please. With the Library Board, Mr. Herbert Mott. And with the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Mr. Dante Owens.
Okay, just bad operator, got it, thank you.
Give it to the mascot. Hello. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Here we have some noble citizens who are going to volunteer to help the city of Portsmouth be a wonderful city. I want to ask one of them to give a little talk, because he's been around a while now. Why do you want to say? Well, because I like doing it. This is my second or third term on the board, the Library Board. My name is Herbert Mott, for those who may not know. I worked in the school system for 34 years, served four years on the school board after I retired, and the rest of the time I spent on the Library Board. It's good to be back.
Thank you.
Why are you doing it, sir? Well, I didn't have anything prepared, but as a young man and a resident of Portsmouth my entire life, I just feel I had to give back my time, my talent to the community.
Very good.
Now, that's the spirit. Please, all of you who have not yet stepped forward, please think about it, call the clerk, ask her to tell us what, tell you what's open, and join us. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, very good. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. And let me say congratulations, Mr. Owens and Mr. Mott. Mr. Mott was my principal at Hurrah Hunt, sir. It is good to see you. You see what you've done? You got your mayor sitting up here. See what standing in your office did for me? It's good to see you, Mr. Mott. Thank you for everything you do, sir, in our city. Madam Clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require limited up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will notice a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of your comments and at the end of five minutes, you will notice a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. City Managers Report. 12-344, Adoption of an Ornate Accepting Program Income in the Amounts of $3,331 in the Community Development Block Grant Program and $41,199 in the Home Program, and Appropriating the Total Sum of $44,530 in the FY 2012/13 Community Planning and Development Program. Vision, Principle, Neighborhoods, and Sense of Community. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Say it again.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, seven zero. 12-345, Adoption of an Ornate Accepting Program Income in the Amount of $640,721.22 from the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and Appropriating Said Amount in the FY 2012/13 Community Planning and Development Program. Vision, Principle, Neighborhood, and Sense of Community. And I have a registered speaker, Ms. Sinise Johnson. Ms. Johnson, did you want to sign up as a non-agenda speaker? Is that what you want, or this item?
Yes, non-agenda.
Okay, all right.
In a way, it's an agenda. It's been on an agenda for quite a few years now, but it's got something that I didn't come to the education, so I'm talking about what I want to talk about.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, members of council, we have no speakers on this item.
Say it again.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Very good.
This item is adopted, seven zero. New Business, 12-346, Boards and Commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, Personnel Committee doesn't have any nominations to put forth tonight, but as the Vice Mayor said a little while ago, we do need additional volunteers because we have some openings. And I would like to turn it over to our co-chair of the Personnel Committee to share with you what those openings are.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. We have immediate openings on the following commissions. We have two positions on the Historic Preservation Commission, one for a resident of Port Norfolk and one for a resident of Parkview. We have five openings on a History Commission. We have one opening on the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, one for the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, two for the Newport Development Authority, and two for the Social Security Advisory Commission, and one for the Tour and Advisory Board. Upcoming openings, next month, in September, we'll have an opening on the Southeastern Alcohol Safety Action Program, and one, citizen, for the Supplemental Retirement Board. In October, we will have openings on the Historic Preservation Commission and the Museum and Fine Arts Commission, one each. November of 2012, we have an opening on the Library Board, and in December, two of our major commissions, Economic Development Authority and the Portsmouth Ports and Industrial Commission, we each have one opening. Thank you very much.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I would add to that, that you can go online to the city's website and get your application, fill it out online. Also, there's a description of what each of those boards and commissions are all about. So if you'd like to volunteer, check us out. We'd love to have you. Thanks.
Thank you.
12-347, Items Submitted by Councilmembers.
Okay, let me first of all say thank you to all of our churches, our Greek organizations and nonprofits. These last couple of weeks, there's been a massive effort of buying school supplies and having different events to recognize our young people, get them excited about going back to school, and there's just been an overwhelming amount of support in that area from all different groups. Want to recognize a couple of larger ones. The Grove Baptist Church did something at I.C. Norcom about two weekends ago, where there was an unheard number of people all day there from nine in the morning till about four. They had moonwalks and splash water buckets and face painting and all of those things, and I think every child left with something. I was honored, two weeks ago, to speak at St. Mark's Missionary Baptist Church. They had their back-to-school extravaganza, where they had quite a few kids, and I don't know how many of you know the First Lady there, but her passion, Ms. Evelyn Edmonds, is education and what they do there and what they've done throughout this city just really makes you stand back and look at the goodness of this city and of all of our churches and organizations that do that. I think there's, this weekend, weather permitting, there's several more that's going to occur. I think the Civic League over at Wilson Ward is having one. So with that, I want to thank all of you for doing that. This really brings out the best in all of us, and the kids, I'm sure, appreciate it, but I'm sure even more their parents appreciate it. So thank each and every one of you for what you do. And also, while we're still talking about kids, I told the children that was at New Bethel Baptist Church that's having a youth conference, a three-day youth conference, last night, tonight, and tomorrow, that I would show off their T-shirt. They have an extravaganza going on there as well, back-to-school, and it's just nice to be able to have the opportunity to go and fellowship and sit in on things like this and see our young people getting excited about going back to school. And lastly, while we're talking about youth, I also had the honor last Saturday to speak to the class of 1962 at I.C. Norcom, celebrating their 50th anniversary. And it was almost 65 people there, and it was really amazing to go through and talk to different ones about what went on in Portsmouth 50 years ago. There was quite a bit of dialogue with the number of theaters that were here, the number of drive-ins, the number of different things that was here and how things were. And it was probably about 20 percent of those people had not been back to Portsmouth in quite a while, and it was amazing to hear their stories and how well they thought we were doing here in the city. One lady was from Queens, New York, and she'd been up there for 35 years, and she was just amazed with how Portsmouth has changed. So to put it in perspective, you know, it's nice to hear that from people that were here and see the progress and the things that are going on in this city, and it just did my heart well. So with that, Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. On an entirely different note, what's more of in Portsmouth right now is mosquitoes. And certainly not a positive subject to talk about, but it's real, particularly in the area of Churchland. I know we've had aerial spraying scheduled. Unfortunately, due to the rain, a lot of those have been canceled. But I want to make sure that we're doing other things other than waiting on a plane to come at 600 feet to spray. I know we can be doing larva sighting and some other things, but the quality of life is really around zero out there. You get in your car, it's almost dangerous, you're swatting mosquitoes as you're trying to leave your neighborhood. Children, speaking of children, at the soccer field, the ball fields, the quality of life is just not there in that particular area. And I know some other areas of Portsmouth are facing the same thing. My point, Mayor, is I would like to see, if there's concurrence, see a briefing to council at our next work session on exactly what we're doing and what we can be doing to alleviate this mosquito epidemic. It's not only a quality of life issue now, it's a health issue as well. So it's a lot of mosquito-borne illnesses that our citizens could be endangered with, but whatever we're doing now, it's not working, and we've got to ramp it up. So that's my request. If there's concurrence, I would like to see council get briefed on that. I see heads shaking, Mayor, so I think there is. Thank you.
Absolutely, good idea.
Thank you, Charlie.
Just while you're on that note, we have had a direct contact and dialogue. As a matter of fact, today, this morning, talking with Bernadette and the mosquito control folks because of the number of calls, and don't know if we actually made the fly over tonight, but we were scheduled to do it on the 20th, and due to bad weather, we had to postpone it to the 27th. And then, due to bad weather yesterday, it was scheduled to the day, and you see what's happening outside. So, but yes, we'll absolutely get a briefing, Mr. Manager. We'll be able to have that by our next meeting, a summary of what we're doing. And thank you very much. Vice Mayor Whitehurst?
Thank you, Mayor. Talk about the good, talk about the not-so-good. Went out to Cavalier Manor and looked at the tennis court out there and passed some pictures around, everybody look at them. We don't have the facilities, maintenance, that we need to take sure that people can play tennis and actually do a good job of learning. Have two sisters, the Williams sisters, are awesome. We just had the tournament in England. All these people are getting on the bandwagon of trying to be more active in education and also in athletics. We need to have the people that can play tennis and teach tennis to do that. And I would like us to take a look at it, Mayor, and ask the City Manager to come up with a plan to do something with those tennis courts we have there. Not only tennis, but all other kind of athletic activities too. Needs be done. We have the money to do it.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 12-348, Report on Pending Items. Ms. Bernadette Hogg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Inbusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on August 14, 2012. There were 13 non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on August 14, 2012. Three of the speakers required action by staff. The first speaker brought forth concerns in regards to the zoning department and information that was given about plans they wanted to use to build a house. As of the end of last week, the citizens submitted plans which met all the current zoning requirements, and these plans can now be approved for construction. Two speakers expressed concerns about mosquitoes. Since August 14, 2012, a total of 15,857 acres in the city have been sprayed, with 30 percent being in the Churchland area. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Okay, before we move on, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Randall had a comment she wanted to make. Ms. Randall?
Yes, my comment was in regard to the tennis court. All of us are very much aware of the significance of those courts that are in Cavalier Manor for years. The children had no place to practice or to even have in intruding tennis, and those courts were set up in the Cavalier Manor community, called those children have an opportunity to experience tennis as well as experiences with the swimming pool. At that time, there was a commitment from the city for the maintenance to go on so that all of the residents in that area and individuals have those opportunities. One of the narrow halls in that area had, as the maintenance has not been maintained, and the ports and all have gotten into a deteriorating condition, where it's going to require some major repairs to get things out there. It should be a top priority in the city, because that was the only place the children had an opportunity to play tennis during the time that that community was built. So I would love to see that happen, because we've come a long ways in that community in getting things done, as well as the swimming pool, because there was no place for them to swim. And those pools were built out there as an incentive and a motivation for people of color to have some spot for the children to reach. And as residents in those areas, it was at that time promised that they would be maintained, members in the community would have an opportunity to have membership, and that had not been thought in any consistent manner. And I just wanted to bring that to the attention, the commitment that was made, but there's been no follow-through.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Randall. Mr. Manager, can we have someone go out and at least assess, assess those tennis courts and look at the conditions and give us some kind of idea of what it would take to bring them back to where we are? Understand, everything has got to be budgeted and the financial piece, but can we at least look and assess the situation and get back with council? Okay, all right. Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to concur with what Vice Mayor Whitehurst and Councilwoman Marlene Randall has, because that's one area of where it's not just needed in the summertime, but that's done also during the winter, where people out there, young people out there, practicing, honing their skills. So I concur with everything that's been said, and plus with your remarks about getting somebody to dispatch out there and look at it.
Sure, we'll take a look at it. Thank you, sir, very much. Vice Mayor?
Now, this is just not talking about Cavalier Manor. I want to look at the whole city. We need to look at what recreational facilities are available to our young people. We're not doing a good job. We need to make sure that we have the money now. Keep saying that because people aren't really catching on. You have $5.5 million sitting there, not being used. We need to make sure we can do those one-time things and spend the money to make sure people's lives are improved.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. 12-349, Non-Agenda Speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Joe Wright, and he's followed by Mr. Steve Carroll.
Honorable Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, City Council members, City Manager Chandler, City Assistant Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Wilson, Sergeant-at-Arms, Deborah White and her capable staff. Good evening. My name is Joseph R. Wright, 1451 Welcome Road in the Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth, Virginia. A couple of meetings ago, I came before you with three concerns, and they were the Cavalier Manor Swimming Pool, the grass cutting in Cavalier Manor, and the Splash Park on Elm Avenue. Well, I will have to give you good marks on the first two items. I got a promise from the council last time I was here that the swimming pool would not be closed. Also noticed that, right after the last meeting that I attended with the council, the grass cutting continued, and I'm very pleased with the action that has been taken on Greenwood Drive and Cavalier Boulevard. The third item was the Splash Pool, and I understand that there was some action taken on the Splash Pool for children two years old and under would be free. I don't know what it's like today, but in my day, you didn't see too many three, four, and five-year-olds walking around with $2 in their pockets. So I think you need to go back to the drawing board and redo that, because, again, the pool, the Splash Park, didn't cost the city anything, and the water is recyclable. I know you'll probably have to pay staff, but we in Cavalier Manor had a group of volunteers that, you know, didn't charge anything. So you might want to relook at that. I know the season is over now, but I'd like to see some improvement on that behalf before the next season's open. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Very well done. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. To Mr. Wright's point, and you don't have to come back, Mr. Wright, he just reminded me, talking about the Splash Park, I've heard reports that it has not been very well attended, even during this hot summer, so that could very well be why, which reminds me, I would like to see, and I'm sure council would too, like to see some attendance figures if we track that for the Splash Park as well as the Cavalier Swimming Pool. I think it's important to know how many children are using both of those facilities. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. All right.
Mr. Steve Carroll, he's followed by Mr. Lee Cherry.
Evening, Mayor, members of council and staff. I think it's going to ring. I do have a limited sense of humor, very limited. Last council meeting, this issue was brought up, and I'm going to follow up on it. Our newspaper has long demonstrated a troubling lack of investigative coverage of Portsmouth's fiscal and administrative scandals. And revisiting this article that was dated August 12 again, the pilot reels off paragraph after paragraph of lamenting the numerous budgetary scandals rocking Southampton roads but ignoring the whoppers in Portsmouth, namely recently the $52 million that was inappropriately used by the school board. And typical of that reporting, such as the light rail was mentioned as being cost overruns in the tens of millions of dollars, when in fact it was over $100 million, and never actually fingering the elected officials who ultimately allowed the ways to go unchecked. And how can a responsible newspaper conduct coverage like this? It's noteworthy that a large portion of the elected officials embroiled in these fiscal quagmires or who should be publicly accountable by name were endorsed by the public, by the pilot for election or reelection. Now, as for the school board, not a single member of our school board has had the integrity to renounce the deliberate practice over five years of hoarding and spending nearly $52 million of taxpayer dollars without authorization from council and against state law. And where is the pilot here? Silent as a lamb. The silence of our school board is an unmistakable sign that they condone illegal and conspiratory conduct like this, and that is simply unacceptable. And what does it say about the integrity and character of the elected officials who aid a bit and turn a blind eye to what the new CFO uncovered about this budgetary and It's especially damning of those elected officials who have a professional and constitutional obligation to ensure that rule of law and justice in Portsmouth are reserved and held above reproach. Any member of our school board or any member of our City Council who fails to condemn this is not worthy of public trust and not worthy of public service, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. My comment to Mr. Carroll would be reference to auditor, and that would be the only thing I'll comment on. He's somewhat preaching to the choir. I was very pleased. You somewhat preaching to the choir, I was very pleased to see at the forum, candidate forum last week where, I guess, three of my colleagues, the mayor, the vice mayor, and Councilman Heretic voiced support for that, and I know other colleagues up here are supportive. With that said, we're still awaiting on some additional research information that's currently being gathered, and I think, I think, Councilman Cherry, I think that's supposed to be ready for us perhaps prior to the next council meeting. So that part, I think, is still, progress is still being made. Wanted you to know that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just to go on record, I have a motion, I'm not gonna do it this, I was asked to hold it until next meeting, to actually approve the auditor position and let the chips fall where they may. So next meeting, I will make a motion.
Mr. Cherry, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, Mayor. How are you? Mayor Vice Mayor, Member of City Council. Most of the time, I'm here representing the sheriff tonight, bringing greetings from Sheriff Watson, but I'm representing our deputies as well that work in the jail. We have a real problem going on right now, and I'm asking for your help. Back on April 26th of 2011, if you look at the work session tapes from that date, Mr. Mayor, you were very clear about your ideas for this city, what you felt should be done downtown, and took a fair amount of time to get that idea across. But at the same time, you made it abundantly clear that you wanted that jail gone at all costs. That went on for some time, and of course, our deputies saw that, and as anyone would wonder, they wondered about their job. On August 15th, just a week ago, Mr. Mayor, you sent a letter to Mr. Dave Simons, Superintendent of Hampton Roads Regional Jail, and that was after a vote here at council that all but said, "Bring your vans, come get inmates, we're ready to send them to Hampton Roads Regional Jail." The press picked up on that, and needless to say, here again, we have almost 100 deputies and staff that run that jail for you, the city of Portsmouth, that go, "We're gonna lose our jobs." In addition to that, yesterday, we received numerous calls from other jurisdictions, would not tell us who was calling them, but they are saying to us, "How many prisoners do you want us to take? We understand we're closing your jail, or you're closing the jail." That's creating quite a morale problem for us. So I guess the question from our deputies is, who's running the show here? Is council gonna blindly go that route and close our jail without even studying the ramifications of this? I will tell you, the Sheriff Watson is not opposed to closing that jail, but he is opposed to going to Hampton Roads Regional Jail and spending $8 to $13 million a year more to maintain prisoners or watch the citizens of Portsmouth pay 20 to 22 cents more on their real estate taxes because they choose to go to Hampton Roads Regional Jail. The tolls fail in comparison to signing an agreement with an entity forever at whatever rate they wanna charge, and that's exactly what you're dealing with. Now, it's a little immature, premature, I should say, to look at those figures now because in October, we're gonna have new figures. I think you're gonna be really surprised what the cost is. I would also say, Mr. Mayor, that the only person that has authority to move those prisoners is the sheriff. And my understanding is the only person or the only people that have the authority to close a jail is state legislators. So it's not as easy as shutting the jail. So I would ask council this, would you at least let our deputies know that this is not gonna occur in October, that these folks that go to work every day, and some of the members of this council have been with me, Mayor, I think you've been with me, to go through that jail and see what these deputies do? I think they deserve better than that. And Mr. Mayor, I will say one other thing. In all of this discussion about closing the jail and the inmates, I don't know of a single conversation from you or any other member of the city where they've called the sheriff and said, "Would you sit down and discuss it with us?" As usual, as has happened in the past with our sheriff, nobody bothers to call him. You've got a sheriff that is willing to work with this city, but being blindsided, having the morale of his department undermined because he's getting these type of remarks, is not fair, and it's not right. If you wanna talk about the jail, the sheriff is tickled to death to talk about the jail, and he will sit down and work with the city any way he can. But don't backdoor him, and don't be talking to other people trying to take authority that in fact, you don't have. As I said, the sheriff's the only one that can move these prisoners. I thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you, Lieutenant. Good night.
Good night.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin, and he's followed by Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, City Manager and Staff. My name is, of course, Tony Goodwin and reside in Parkview here in the city. I'm coming to you tonight with a little bit of concern, of course, of the jail situation. As from this podium here, many, a few years ago, I spoke about the not-so-smart idea to move this courthouse directly across the street on a piece of property that was inadequate for it to only have 25 parking spaces and have 90,000 square foot of building. We cleaned that up, we made a common sense approach, changed the whole gear, you know, changed gears in the process, and we have a beautiful facility down on Crawford Parkway. Oh, excuse me, Court, what's gonna be Court Street is now Port Center Parkway. But that being said, the jail is obviously a big problem. With that jail still sitting there, we're never going to acquire or find a developer that's going to be at all interested in building a new facility on that parking lot down there. And at the same time, too, also still have available space to park them. If it's either hotel condos, casino, maybe sometime in the near future, who knows? But I can tell you that I think that we are, if we look at the only option as being a regional jail option, yes, it is a never-ending contract, it's an accelerating kind, well, basically accelerates up to a number of price later on down the line that could possibly break us or either, or be just not cost prohibitive. So I would say, go back and look at the drawing board, look at a replacement facility, a building that basically you own as a, well, we own as a city, and own city property, rather than trying to take and pull this trick with some sort of contractor out there at the regional jail. With that being said, there is property, or there is property available for that, the parcel that's basically right behind the courthouse now, that was put off to the side for the police headquarters, as some would rumor, but would be considered a great site for a jail that would house inmates for the city and still have that opportunity to use the regional jail for what it's used for, and that's overflow. The next point of that is to look at it as an option of a buy-leaseback process, where the city owns the land, has it built by a developer, comes in and builds it at cost, and then leases it back to the city for a certain period of time and gives it to them at the end of a 20-year, 25, 30-year period, whichever the terms are. You're buying your property, you're buying what we need as a facility to handle these inmates. And to add to that, we can do this in a short amount of time with very, very unique and also out-of-the-box thinking by looking at this as a modular construction project, where the cells are actually developed and built by a company either in Pennsylvania or Louisiana, shipped by barge or by truck to our site, erected just like Lego blocks, plugged in, and in operation in very, very short order. In fact, could probably build a 400-unit building down there somewhere in the neighborhood of eight to 12 months with the right people on the job, with the right team put together. I know we've obviously got some issues with building and developing properties in this city, and it takes a little bit longer than we normally like to have happen, but I think if there's a will, there's a way. I do have some information about one of those properties, or one of those companies. I do not represent them, as you know, I'm a commercial real estate agent, but I do not represent them. I've simply wanted to look and investigate ways to get something done at a cost, with a cost factor involved, and then also just thinking out of the box of getting something done that's gonna better this city and all of its citizens combined. And at the end of the day, not cost us an arm and a leg over a longer period of time, we never own anything at the regional jail, at least with a project like this, we own an asset at the end of the day that could last us over 100 years because it's all concrete, steel, it won't go anywhere, it's just gotta be placed in the right location and be adequate to the services that it's gonna provide. Again, I have packages here, if you're interested, I will be more than happy to distribute them to the Sergeant-at-Arms for your reading pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Tony.
Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si, and she's followed by Mr. Coleman Young.
I have the copy, Sergeant-at-Arms. Good evening, representatives of our city. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farms section of Churchland, Portsmouth. Tonight, I would like to share with you what I learned about leadership when I wrote a paper for my PLG Seminar Leadership Project at the International Institute for Restorative Practices. I learned that leadership is about reflection and application. Leaders are at their best when they apply the following five principles or model of leadership. Leaders model the way, inspire a shared vision, challenge the process, enable others to act, and encourage the heart. Unexamined experiences don't produce the rich insights that come from reflection and analysis. The first thing a leadership team needs to do is to share their values. Conflicts occur when there are no consensus of shared values. Once there is a consensus of shared values, then the five principles or model of leadership must be practiced by the leaders modeling the way. As leaders, we must believe in something, we must stand up for our beliefs. What are our beliefs to stand up for? We find our voice by clarifying our personal values and express them in a style that is authentically our own. We must build a consensus about our shared values, we must spend time with others, working side by side with colleagues, tell stories that make our values come alive. Leaders being visible during times of uncertainty and asking questions help people think about their values and priorities. Leaders inspire a shared vision. Leaders envision the future, they gaze across the horizon of time, imagine the attractive opportunities that are in store once we arrive at the final destination. Leaders have a desire to make something happen, to change how things are, to create something that no one else has ever created before. Leaders enlist people in a vision and know them and relate to them in ways that energize and uplift them. People must believe that their leaders understand their needs and have their interests at heart. We need to have an intimate knowledge of people's dreams, hopes, aspiration, and vision, and values to be able to enlist their support. Leadership is a dialogue, not a monologue. Leaders breathe life into the hopes and dreams of others and enable them to see the exciting possibilities that the future holds. Leaders forge unity of purpose by showing members how their dreams are for the common good and by showing their passion through vivid language and expression. Leaders challenge the process. Leaders are pioneers, people who are willing to step out into the unknown. They search for opportunities to innovate, grow, and improve. They search for opportunities in recognition of good ideas, support of those ideas, and the willingness to challenge the system in order to get a new process and system adopted. The key to learning is taking on risk and experimentation. Leaders are great learners. Leaders enable others to act. Before a leader will be able to enable others to act, he or she must learn his or her leadership style. Taking the spectral management-type inventory will help leaders in this regard. The last principle, leaders are at their best when they encourage the heart. Leaders encourage the heart of their constituents to carry on when the people become exhausted, frustrated, and disenchanted, when they are often tempted to give up. Leaders' genuine acts of caring uplift their broken spirits and draw their people forward. It is also a part of the leader's job to recognize contributions, people of people, by showing appreciation for individual excellence. Are you the representative of our city modeling the way, inspiring a shared vision, challenging the process, enabling others to act, and encouraging the heart of our citizens of Portsmouth? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good night.
Mr. Coleman Young is followed by Mr. Joey Thorpe.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council and city staff. I've come before you to put my no-toll hat on and talk about a fundraiser that we're having September 15th. It's a motorcycle and car poker run. It's the type of thing that's gonna be starting that Saturday morning, registration's from 9:00 to 11:00, starting at Bayside Harley-Davidson Store and winding up at Big Woody's in the entrance to the Chesapeake Mall to be able to end with a social. With this, a poker run is basically, you go to six locations, you pick, each location, you pick a card, the best card wins prizes. I do want to compliment the help I've gotten from Bayside Harley-Davidson Store, they've gone out of their way to help, and they've got an excellent marketing department, they're going on a website, they're giving information on how to do the publicity, because we wanna make this a real big event, it's a very, it's a fun event, as well as get support for the effort to raise money for the lawsuit. I also wanna compliment the owner, Maurice Slaughter, he's made a contribution to the program, he's behind it, we get the benefit, you couldn't get a benefit of being able to advertise this poker run on the billboard, you got cars going down to the downtown tunnel seeing it, I couldn't compliment them any higher and on. I do want to type of some longevity, I would like to ask the mayor, invite the mayor for him to be able to go and get his leather and chains, and I understand Mr. Oakesman is a motorcycle, he's a biker, and I thought maybe the two of y'all could group together and be bike buddies for this event. Also, as another note to poke a little bit to the governor, I understand the governor is making a speech down in Tampa, well, I think he should be here to hear this talk because this talk, you know, he says this is a done deal. Well, he's done all right, he's well done. This is a done deal because we're going to court and we're gonna eliminate the tolls. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Joey Thorpe, and he's followed by Ms. Sarah Preston.
Hello. Can you hear me? Gotcha. Good evening, Mayor Wright and honorable council members. My name is Joe Thorpe. I reside at 1625 Ward Terrace in Portsmouth, and I've been a proud resident of this city for the last year. I'm here to express how important it is to fully ban a chain, chaining of dogs in our fine city. Dogs are extremely social animals who need companionship, exercise, and positive reinforcement. To force them to endure a life at the end of a chain will often cause them to go insane from confinement and to lash out. Leaving a dog in isolation to eat, sleep, urinate, defecate in one place is not only dangerous to them, but it's also dangerous to anyone who might come too close to them. A life on a chain can cause a normally loving and affectionate animal to become terrified and aggressive, which could cause serious injury or death to someone, like a curious child who comes too close, or anyone who comes across the dog if he happens to break free. Simply put, it's wrong, it's unnatural, and it's dangerous. Now, I've brought in, as an example, the chain one of my ex-neighbors used to put his dog on. I mean, as you can see, it's extremely hard for me to even hold this thing, just imagine having to live at the end of it. As someone who loves dogs, I also know that the aggression that these dogs display is not their natural state, but an effect of their sad and neglectful living conditions. Chaining is cruel and dangerous, and for the sake of Portsmouth's people and Portsmouth's dogs, please ban it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Sarah Preston is followed by Ms. Michelle Godinez.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Sarah Preston, and I reside at 209 Sandpiper Drive in the wonderful Shea Terrace neighborhood. I love living in Portsmouth, and specifically, I really love living in Shea Terrace. Some of the things that drew me to Shea Terrace were the location, the friendly people, the cleanliness and safety of the neighborhood, and how dog-friendly the neighborhood is. At any time of the day, my neighbors can be seen walking their healthy, happy dogs, and no dogs that I know of in Shea Terrace are relegated to lonely backyards at the end of a chain. This is not the case for many, or maybe even most, of the dogs in Portsmouth. When driving between Shea Terrace and Churchland, there are certain streets that I avoid altogether because the sight of these miserable dogs is too much to bear. The life of a chained dog is a life of boredom, loneliness, and discomfort. These dogs face the biting cold of winter and the blistering heat of summer, and I think we can all agree that none of us wanted to be outside for long during many days this summer, and we'd want that even less if we were covered in fur. They pace dirt circles surrounded by their own waste, unable to run, play, or even turn to their human guardian for a comforting touch. Chained dogs are not only miserable, they're also, and perhaps more importantly, dangerous. Chaining leads to aggression in frustrated dogs driven mad by their solitary confinement. Chained dogs are almost three times as likely to bite as unchained dogs, and chained dogs kill 33% more children than falls and firework accidents combined, and fireworks are illegal in the city of Portsmouth. The epidemic of chained dogs should be considered a public safety concern for our city. For the dogs' sake, for our citizens' and our children's sake, and for the sake of Portsmouth itself, I ask you, council members, to please consider enacting a ban on the tethering of animals. Thank you very much for your time.
And, you can go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, attendees. My name is Michelle Godinez, I live at 3409 Dartmouth Street in Portsmouth. I've lived in Portsmouth about 12 years. I came tonight to lend my support and to ask for a restriction, or preferably a banning of the chaining or tethering of dogs. I have done quite a bit of research and have seen countless statistics and news reports regarding this issue. Every year, there are human deaths by chained dogs, as well as bites and other dire injuries. I found out that chained dogs are almost three times more likely to bite because being restrained constantly increases their protective nature for their small area, raises their stress, and they feel vulnerable. All this combined increases their aggression. Sadly, I also found out that just this year, two children under five were mauled to death by chained dogs in their own neighborhood. I believe that our city has the duty to be the first line of defense when protecting the community and the people living within. We also have the duty to be good stewards to our animals, the animals in our care. That is why I've come here tonight to put forth to you an authority that the chaining of dogs is an extremely dangerous practice, and not only promotes cruelty to the dog, but also a sort of time bomb waiting to explode syndrome in the animal that ultimately ends in the disfigurement or death of human beings. I believe that we, as a community, need to evolve and remember that things do not always need to stay the same or be the norm. Restricting or preferably banning altogether would take the dog out of a terrible situation that makes it fearful and aggressive as it would be part of the family, the pack, so to speak. It's in their nature, and when their nature is stymied and everything that is natural or normal to a dog is taken away, we're creating monsters. We are creating monsters. It's ultimately our fault as human beings. I would be proud to say that I live in Portsmouth where we have evolved in this matter for the protection of our children, ourselves, and our animals, just like the citizens of Hampton did recently, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Forbes, and she's followed by Chris Fontes.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, and honorable members of the council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jen Forbes, and I represent People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals and its supporters and members here in Portsmouth. We are here to respectfully urge you to pass legislation banning or restricting continuous chaining of dogs. Would everyone who is here tonight to support a tethering ban please stand up? Thank you. Last week, we shared with you some data and photos of chained dogs in your city. Today, in addition to supporters, I have brought some additional photos of dogs chained here in your own backyard, so to speak. Because of the plight of dogs like these victims of chaining, Hampton City Council members unanimously voted to enact a tethering ban last month. Norfolk and Virginia Beach have also placed restrictions on tethering dogs. Portsmouth is no stranger to the consequences of chaining. Earlier this year, a chained dog named Storm strangled to death on a chain when she hung herself over a fence. Another dog, Bear, spent his entire life on a chain. He was denied badly needed veterinary care for a large tumor which burst and became infected with maggots. PETA field workers have received and responded to hundreds of other complaints over the years about lonely, neglected, and injured chained dogs in Portsmouth. Chaining dogs is cruel, as it forces these social pack animals to lead isolated, lonely lives in small barren patches of dirt with no escape from their own waste and nothing to keep them stimulated. Many are deprived of adequate food, water, shelter, and veterinary care. Chained dogs understandably become scared, depressed, territorial, and often aggressive, and therefore dangerous to anyone who might come close to them. Dogs on chains routinely attack children who wander too close, as well as others if and when they break free, like the dog Smoke in this photo, who was highly aggressive and eventually attacked an eight-year-old boy. A life on a chain is not one that I would wish for anyone to suffer. If the dogs of Portsmouth could speak for themselves, they would certainly join me and our supporters in asking you to support a ban or significant restriction on chaining. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Following Mr. Fontes is Kent Stein.
Good evening. My name is Chris Fontes, and I reside at 721 Dinwiddie Street in Old Town. I've lived in Portsmouth for two years. I've volunteered with Portsmouth Humane Society. I take the ferry to work every day, and I love this city. I'm here to speak up for the chained dogs that live in Portsmouth. I see the city headed in a very positive direction with a lot of the great decisions that you guys have made, and I'm really impressed, and I really love being here. And I think that banning continuous chaining of dogs would be another step in the right direction. Hot in the summer, cold in the winter, and always lonely, chained dogs have no life at There are water spills and they suffer thirst. Other animals or people that they perceive as a threat enter their tiny territory, and they have no means of escape. They spend their lives with no room to move, which frustrates them and makes them aggressive. They are a danger to our community through no fault of their own. There's not one good reason to chain a dog. If you've ever lived next door to a chained dog like I have, then you'll know what it's like to look out your window and feel their despair while fearing for your own safety and the safety of your friends and families. Please introduce and vote in favor of a chaining ban. Do it for the future of Portsmouth and for all of its residents, too, and for all the good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following Mr. Stein is Ms. Linda Sealy.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, council members. My name is Kent Stein, and I live at 209 Sandpiper Drive in Portsmouth. I'm a Port Shea Terrace resident, and I've moved here from Norfolk last year because I found a lovely home with a fenced-in yard for my dogs and a great neighborhood. However, the more I settle in, the more I find myself concerned with the chained dog problem in our city. Whenever I walk my dogs, I can't fully explore Portsmouth because I find myself having to avoid certain streets and houses where I've seen chained dogs in the past. Having an aggressive dog lunge at my dogs and me from a chain, as well as bark and cry continuously, look at us hopelessly, and sometimes even get tangled, is not my idea of a pleasant or safe stroll. I have to stick to a specific route where I know my own dogs and me will not be in danger in case a chained dog does break free and attack us out of frustration. My biggest fear is that a chained dog will pop up outside of a house on my route, or even worse, next to me, in which case I will have to consider moving from the house that I love and to a different city or neighborhood. As someone who loves dogs and our city, I encourage our city council members to consider a complete ban on chaining. Thank you for making Portsmouth a great place to live.
Thank you.
Ms. Linda Sealy, and she's followed by Mr. Peter Rafferty.
Hi, I'm Linda Sealy, and my name is Linda Sealy, and I am from Hampton, Virginia, and I'm here tonight to speak to you all about passing a no tethering. Our city did quite an evaluation, and fortunately, they've covered everything, so I don't have to go all through this, so I can make mine short. But we passed two weeks ago, all seven council members voted for no tethering. We got more publicity than any city official that ran for office, and I worked on the campaigns. It was surprising. I said, you know, you should have done this before you ran, because it really got them great. They didn't do it now for great publicity, they did it because we have a wonderful city. Wonderful, Hampton is wonderful, and I've invited Dr. Edmonds and Dr. Moody and Ms. Randall to come over, and Mr. Whitehurst, and I'll be happy to take a tour of our wonderful city and how things are going on in our animals, and take you on a tour and then take you to lunch, because you deserve it. If you were to do this, you deserve more than a lunch. We, I'm telling you, really do, because I'm pleading with you. I have been in it for 40 years, and I have seen some horrible cases. I don't want to sit up here and depress you and make you cry, but it's something that you'd never want to see. And being on the animal court for the city of Hampton, we've seen some terrible situations, and it was time for some city to come forward, in our state, and be the first. And I commend my city council, they work very hard, and they're very proud they made the decision. And the people are happy. We didn't even have anyone to contest it. It was really bad, though, but it's getting better now. So I'm just respectfully asking you all, please, please, I urge you to pass a no tethering. You won't regret it, and I'll tell you why. It will make your, you will get papers, you'll get things written on you that you never thought praising you, that you, I'm sure you get good things all the time, but I know the little, I'm sure, but I will guarantee you'll get some good letters, not from Hampton too, not only from your Portsmouth, from PETA, but from other people. So, they're defenseless, they're God's creatures, they can't speak for themselves, and I know that you all want the animals to live just as comfortably as your wonderful cities. We love it. Some of my best friends was telling me tonight, they bought a house, let me see, on Longpoint Boulevard, and they said, you know, we don't have that on our street. But God, is it really going on in Norfolk, I mean Portsmouth? And I said, yes. They said, well, you talk to him for us, because he works at the shipyard at night. So, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and all council members, and Mrs. Randall, the animals, and Mr. Moody, and Mr. Cherry, I don't want to leave anybody out, no one. Dr. Edmonds, who's the jewel, please do your best, will you please? They need you. You all in a position, we're not in a position that we can change it, we can just voice it, but all seven of you have the power to make it better and different for the animals. So I urge you and plead with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Peter Rafferty, and he's followed by Mr. David Dodd.
Well, good evening, Mayor Wright and Vice Mayor Whitehurst. My name is Peter Raffetto. I've been a Portsmouth resident for 10 years now and have recently moved into a home at 416 Dinwiddie Street here in Old Town. I'm thrilled to have established permanent roots in this city, and I'm here to support a ban on chaining dogs. Chaining a dog for hours on end neglects these loyal, clever animals' emotional well-being, robs them of exercise, which they all need, and compromises the safety of our community. Kept out of sight, out of mind in the backyard, chained dogs are often deprived of adequate food, water, and veterinary care, in addition to having their emotional and social needs completely ignored. Chained dogs often become aggressive and attack children or other people who approach them. Chained dogs are more likely to bite because they are unsocialized, their living space is reduced to a few square feet, which heightens their territoriality, and they don't have the option of escaping during a confrontation. Other Hampton Roads communities have learned the hard way that not only is chaining dogs an animal welfare issue, it's also a public safety hazard. I urge the council to ban chaining altogether. Thank you for your consideration and for making Portsmouth such a great place to live.
Thank you. Dr. Edmonds, I'm sorry, the jewel of the group is what she said.
That's right. That's why I had to say something, man. I don't agree with chaining dogs, but I was just so impressed with the heart and persuasiveness of all of you that have shared tonight. And I can't speak for all of my colleagues, but I'm sure any inhumane thing that's done to any animal really is disturbing to any of us, so I just want to share it. And Ms. Sealy, I'm going to take you up on the lunch issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds.
Mr. David Dodd, and he's followed by our final speaker, Ms. Sunice Johnson.
Mayor, councilman, Vice Mayor, my name is David Dodd, and I live at 828 Pacific Avenue. And for those of you that don't know where that is, it backs up to Willett Hall, and the baseball fields are sort of in my backyard, right there. I think that unchaining dogs is a great thing, I think it's a good thing, and you guys probably should support that, but you know what? You need a strong police department to enforce whatever laws that you have. And councilmen, the city of Portsmouth needs to spend some money on the police department. My house has been robbed, I've been there 26 years. My house has been robbed four times. It's been robbed two times in the last five years. The last time that it got robbed, I had it. I came downtown, I set up a meeting to meet with the mayor, and the mayor was gracious enough to meet with me. I went and I talked to the Commonwealth's attorney, the Commonwealth's attorney met with me, I really appreciated that, and he put one of his best men on the job. I went to see the chief of police. The chief of police refused to see me. He would not see me. He did send the captain out, saw me, and the captain, he got some results. He did send the captain out, saw me, and the captain, he got some results. Councilman, Mayor, I know that if your business or your home was robbed, there would have been an arrest made already. Now, I found, I don't have any notes, this is written on my heart, what I have to say tonight. There was a $4,000 guitar stolen from me that I bought to play in church. I found it in the pawn shop, not the police department, I found it. When, when the detective called me about the incident, I knew it was over with. I knew that if I didn't do the police work, it wasn't going to get done. So I went to every pawn shop there was, and I gave out my business card to every one of them. And finally, all it is, that's a little police work, that's police work. You go around looking for it. What they do with pawn shops is they sit back and they wait for the pawn shop owner to give them a report on what they took in. Okay? Then I have to prove, if it comes up, I have to prove that it belongs to me. What happens to the proof that the person that comes to pawn it has, when they come in to pawn the thing, why don't they have to prove that they own it before they can pawn it? I can't, you know, I just, I really don't understand that concept. And people think, oh, yeah, the pawn shops, they're, they're great, they're great, they help people out. No, they don't help people out. People go in there and they pawn things, and they have to pay an exorbitant amount to get it back out at the pawn dealers. And I only have one minute, so I want to cut it short. I'm here to ask for the resignation of the Chief of Police. I looked at it today. The Chief of Police makes, give or take, $100,000. You can pay me $50,000, half of what you pay that Chief of Police, and I guarantee you, I will get results. And that other $50,000, you can give to some deserving detectives who go out and do their job every day and try their very best to conquer the crime that's in this city. I'm here representing myself and my business. You are going to lose businesses because of the robbery in this city. They are gonna leave. And I hope that doesn't happen, because I've lived here all my life.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. The topic that Mr. Dodd was noted to be speaking for is what I want to speak to, and that's the dog chaining. I agree with my colleague, Dr. Edmonds, that I think we need to look at leash chaining law, tethering law, I think, as ordinance is what they're referring to. I think it is inhumane to keep animals chained. Obviously, we can't just pass something tonight, but if there's concurrence, I would like for the legal department to get back with us and give council something to, to consider, something to discuss. I don't believe we've really even had time to discuss it as a council, as far as I know. So if there's concurrence, Mayor, I'd like to see the legal department get back with us on that. And I would like to thank the folks, you've put together a very professional package of information that will really help us formulate a decision and perhaps ordinance. But I want to thank you for being here tonight. Reference you, Mr. Dodd, I think anytime our homes are broken into, that's, we feel violated. Somehow, it never feels quite the same. And I'm certainly sorry to hear that you've had those bad experiences. I know, I know our chief, I've seen the stats since he's been in town, and he came to us from a state where it's rough to be a cop in, and that's New Jersey. And so he, he can outsmart the bad guys, if you may. So I think his team is producing results, obviously. You've, you've been impacted, and once again, I'm sorry for that, but I think you'll see, if you look citywide, that trend is getting better, and I commend the chief and his department for their part in producing good numbers for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Well done.
Our final speaker is Ms. Saneesh Johnson.
Good night. That's right, you're under seventeen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Councilman, and audience. I didn't come here tonight to speak because I feel like I've been beating myself up against a brick wall for the past five years about the tennis courts, but I'm glad to hear that somebody, Vice Mayor and Mrs. Randall, she's been supportive of Cavalier Manor, which I was reared in, and it's one of the most elaborate, nice, still prominent black neighborhoods in the United States. And I live there still, although I have a home in River Point. I still maintain my residency in Portsmouth and Cavalier Manor simply because of my parents. And I still have roots here, and I have a love for this city. And for some reason, I can't get away, you know, I just have a love for this city. But anyway, in reference to the tennis courts, tennis is just one of my passions. I developed, I started playing back in nineteen seventy-four, and I've met everybody from Arthur Ashe down to Venus and Serena Williams. So as this community, as the city began to age, Cavalier Manor residents began to grow old, me and my colleagues found ourselves coming back home, coming back home to take care of our aging parents. And so since, since we saw that our community has been elected, we looked at the tennis courts, we looked at the baseball field, we looked at the swimming pool, the rec center, all of these facilities were built back in Cavalier Manor, back in the fifties. And Mrs. Randall and Dr. Randall was very inspirational and keeping and supporting the facilities that were built there. And I don't know how many tennis courts were built in the city of Portsmouth, but I understand there were quite a few built with federal funds. And we just feel, as homeowners and residents of our community, that we've been passed over. I feel it's okay to build something new, build a community, to build a sports plex or whatever we need to build in this city to keep, move this city forward, but we still need to preserve what we have. And Cavalier Manor is still a very prominent, beautiful neighborhood. I rode around just Saturday, I just took the whole day, and I just rode throughout the community and just looked at the beautiful homes. People are renovating, people are breaking, and I talked to people who've been there for fifty years, fifty-eight years. And I asked them, why are you still here in this community? And they told me they had a love for the community. You know, they've been there all their life, and they didn't want to move. Why move and build a home somewhere else when we have a loving home here? So I say to you, you know, we need to move Portsmouth forward. I'm just not concerned about the tennis and sports here in this city. I'm concerned about the city as a city itself, Portsmouth as a city itself. We need businesses here. We need to bring, find a way to bring some businesses to Portsmouth so we can put people back to work. We need to find a way to bring some programs here so we can get these young kids off the street. Now, I know people make kids make mistakes. We have kids that come to me, I find kids coming to me, see me out in Cavalier Manor on the tennis courts, and they say, Ms. Johnson, we don't have jobs, you know? So I say, why you don't have a job? Well, I made a mistake, I'm a felon, you know what I mean? People make mistakes, but still, I think we need to find a way to reach these kids, get some programs and get these kids in a program and retrain them, you know, help them. You know, we talk about kids on the street, they're robbing and they're stealing, they're breaking the people's homes, you know, but you need to find a way to prevent it, and they need help, they need support, you know what I mean? We need restaurants here. We need a shopping mall. We don't even have a full-fledged shopping mall here in Portsmouth. I've been in Portsmouth all my life, and I find myself traveling, not traveling out of the country, but I don't even shop in Portsmouth. There's nowhere to shop. So I find myself going to Suffolk, I go to Virginia Beach, I go to Chesapeake, I go to Newport News, and, and we have money. There's a lot of prominent financially situated citizens still in this, in this city who are retired, but we don't have anywhere to go. So you say you don't spend money, people don't spend money in Portsmouth because they say there's nowhere to go, you know? So they find themselves going down Virginia Beach to eat. I find myself out on the, on the ship's cabin on Shore Drive, you know, down at the oceanfront. You know, I go anywhere sometime just to get out of the city, because there's nothing, there's nothing to do, there's nowhere to go. You know, we want to have nice places to eat, you know, nice places to visit. We want to invite our friends here. I have friends throughout all the cities, Hampton, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Suffolk. And by the way, me and my family came to Portsmouth from Suffolk. Back in the fifties, my father was in the Navy, and my brothers are still trying to figure out why I'm still in Portsmouth. I have a love for Portsmouth. They want me to move, you know? But I still have a love for Portsmouth. They say, well, you don't have anything to do, you know, there's nowhere to go, leave. But like I said, I still feel that this is a beautiful city, and I know that the leaders mean well. Sometime, we get lost, you know, we get stagnated, you know? But let's come together and let's move this city Portsmouth forward.
Thank you very much.
Let's see what we can do for the citizens of Portsmouth, okay, so we can be proud. Thank you.
Very good. Good night.
Members of council, there is no additional business to come before you this evening?
Okay. Major.